Thank and praise you for this joyful day you've given us. To once again come before your presence, to bow down, to worship you, to adore and to magnify you. To give our grateful thanks unto you Lord, for all that you have done during these past 25 years. Truly when we look back Lord, our hearts are full of gratitude and adoration. Lord, it's not man's doing Lord, but thank you for your plans towards us, for your purposes in this place. And thank and praise you for the souls that have been saved, families that have been added. And also the physical structure Lord, you have helped us to have and these facilities. So that your children could come here to worship you and also to pray and Lord make their supplications. Thank you Lord, we can never Lord repay for that goodness, faithfulness that you have shown towards us. Even though many times we have failed, many times we have come short of your expectation Lord. We fumbled, we have become lethargic, we do admit Lord, we have become selfish. Our own issues, our own families, but Lord many times we have even neglected God's house. Nevertheless, we thank you for your continued presence, thank you for your eyes are here. Your ears are attentive to the prayers of your children. Thank and praise you Lord for putting Satan and all its plans to shame. Lord over these years, we thank you for the victory that you have given us through thy son Lord Jesus Christ. Lord as we enter one more year, we thank you for these four days of special meetings. Thank you also for your servant whom you have brought all the way from Coimbatore. Lord pray that you would anoint, induce him, thank you for the ministry that has been Lord accomplished this morning. Evening also Lord, we pray for your Lord grace, your leading and guidance. Pray that you would use your servant for salvation of souls. The rest, the remaining days also Lord, we will be able to see your glory. Lord, there are so many areas where we need to be corrected, exhausted. Lord set things right, therefore speak to us Lord. Your word may be brought with clarity, authority, simplicity. So that Lord everyone who comes here may be able to rededicate. And also Lord we may have the genuine desire to have a revival in our spiritual life. Also we thank you for all the volunteers who have been laboring. Lord pray that you would bless and reward them. Pray for the weather especially. Lord pray that these three days we will be able to have clear weather. So that those who come from far India may be able to come in time. So that Lord they may be able to be blessed by your word. We also pray for the time of singing, make it a blessing for us. The word, the translation, in entire ministry. Lord we pray for your presence, your headship here, take charge of us. We thank you for all those who would come so far, those who are on the way may be brought in time. We once again Lord empty ourselves, surrender ourselves into your loving hands. Expecting great things from you this evening. We pray and ask in the precious name of Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
To begin with, we will sing song number one, song number four from the song sheets. And the song books 778 in the new, the old and 189 in the new. Partisan can naal go, he song shesam ji, song number four. Oh Abraham, his sakho. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Elohi Adhoniya Trieka Deva Prabhuva Musruchi Kartavu Ni Bu. Elohi Adhoniya Trieka Deva Prabhuva Musruchi Kartavu Ni Bu. Kellari atbu ta raksha tu rabu. Kellari atbu ta raksha tu rabu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Eho va deva Prabhuva La Prabhuva Dasha Na Vichu Devu Rabu. Eho va deva Prabhuva La Prabhuva Dasha Na Vichu Devu Rabu. Navaadu Nethya Rabu. Navaadu Nethya Rabu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Elshada Ri Prabhuva Sarva Shakti Manthu Da Sauru Poona Trukti Nichu Prabhuo Ni Ve. Elshada Ri Prabhuva Sarva Shakti Manthu Da Sauru Poona Trukti Nichu Prabhuo Ni Ve. Samrudini Raksha Nanu Nichu Vaadu. Samrudini Raksha Nanu Nichu Vaadu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Eho va ai re Chuchu Ko Du Vaadu. Eho va rope Swasta Parchu Vaadu. Eho va ai re Chuchu Ko Du Vaadu. Eho va rope Swasta Parchu Vaadu. Eho va nisir Jayavichu Vaadu. Eho va nisir Jayavichu Vaadu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Eho va kaadechu Shuddi Cheyu Vaadu. Eho va shaalevu Shanti Kartavu. Eho va kaadechu Shuddi Cheyu Vaadu. Eho va shaalevu Shanti Kartavu. Eho vasidhkeelu Mari Tienu Ni Ve. Eho vasidhkeelu Mari Tienu Ni Ve. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Eho va rohi Lokasauraksha Thoda Gora Le Rilla Ti Ke Neera Vaayavu. Eho va rohi Lokasauraksha Thoda Gora Le Rilla Ti Ke Neera Vaayavu. Vaatini Viruva Kanadi Pe Da Bu. Vaatini Viruva Kanadi Pe Da Bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Eho va shamma Ichcha Thunna Vaadu Jeeventu Bu Prabhu Yuga Yuga Bu. Eho va shamma Ichcha Thunna Vaadu Jeeventu Bu Prabhu Yuga Yuga Bu. Sadhammu Ni To Ne Nunche Da Bu. Sadhammu Ni To Ne Nunche Da Bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. Oh Abraham his sakho, hisra helu deva. Nethya ni vasini bu. We will sing song number one. Partisan ke okati sheet unche. Probably couple of years ago also we sang this song, it should be well known to you. Kalsbhadu no. Stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Iruvadai reelu kache. Korataleni meela nichen. Iruvadai reelu kache. Korataleni meela nichen. Chedche prajananandari no. Cheri paadistutin chedamu stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Kalsbhadu no, thama, thodakunche, pallavi charanam, bottham parta vaadkunam, starting unche. Andar kalsi. Stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Iruvadai reelu kache. Korataleni meela nichen. Iruvadai reelu kache. Korataleni meela nichen. Chedche prajananandari no. Cheri paadistutin chedamu stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Suvartha sainyamu nichen. Uvi paishatruni pani napen. Suvartha sainyamu nichen. Uvi paishatruni pani napen. Veni na vaari ni pratikichi. Cheri paadistutin chedamu stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Parishutta sangamu chen. Neer pe satya paramamulu. Parishutta sangamu chen. Neer pe satya paramamulu. Sariga sakshamu prapichen. Cheri paadistutin chedamu stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Indha varaku kache devure. Kavaliyunchen Prabhuve. Kavaliyunchen Prabhuve. Sahpani vaari nosage. Cheri paadistutin chedamu stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Indi aalo i nagaru. Antiyokayavale jese. Indi aalo i nagaru. Antiyokayavale jese. Svanta mugalu chesi konen. Cheri paadistutin chedamu stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Stutintun parishudduni Aaradanato. Indha varaku kache devure. Paramadarshanam. Paramadarshanamu nee chen. Sariga lo parache marala. Paramadarshanamu nee chen. Sariga lo parache marala. Karamu nee chen, nadi pinchen. Cheripaadi stutin chedamu stutintun parishuttuni aaradanato. Indavaraku kache devure. Stutintun parishuttuni aaradanato. Indavaraku kache devure. Sangamaramamulu delpi. Shigramugalam penu vartha. Sangamaramamulu delpi. Shigramugalam penu vartha. Parche papularen tari no. Cheristutin chedamu hallelu yapa. Stutintun parishuttuni aaradanato. Indavaraku kache devure. Stutintun parishuttuni aaradanato. Indavaraku kache devure. Partasankya moodu. Ek sarap pallavi charanam partam, pallavi charanam ekta laguntadi. Kanidini kardamo, kadintlo na message ni gamanichane. Partasankya moodu. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Neeti nyanamugalavaada. Neeti nyanamugalavaada. Jothi kinnilayamu neevay. Jothi kinnilayamu neevay. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Abramulu pilachitivi. Avanshamuna bhootitivim. Abramulu pilachitivim. Avanshamuna bhootitivim. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Kalsparukum tama? Partan de laguntadi. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Neeti nyanamugalavaada. Neeti nyanamugalavaada. Jothi kinnilayamu neevay. Jothi kinnilayamu neevay. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Abramulu pilachitivim. Avanshamuna bhootitivim. Abramulu pilachitivim. Avanshamuna bhootitivim. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Esaku duviripinchiri. Esayapari ainavam. Esaku duviripinchiri. Esayapari ainavam. Yodachenam abaditivim. Yodachenam abaditivim. Papulakay maralinchitivim. Papulakay maralinchitivim. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Yonavale shobidam. Kals, pakka, starta galan. Unavane mudutinamul. Bhukarpamuna nin bundi. Unavane mudutinamul. Bhukarpamuna ni vuti. Manavulenu rakshimpam. Manavulenu rakshimpam. Mahimathodale chitivim. Mahimathodale chitivim. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Kanyaputhudavaisi onu. Kanyaputhudavaisi onu. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Paapi nilanuprelinchi. Paapi nilanuprelinchi. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Neeti nyanamugalavaada. Neeti nyanamugalavaada. Jothi kinnilayamu neevay. Jothi kinnilayamu neevay. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Adi antamule ni vaada sampuunudaguma devam. Mail paliva. Balimallu maacha gangaru maa. Bhaillo maacha suvada. Balibale maacha gangaru maa. Bhaillo maacha suvada. Naasi vitana ruchi vitana. Mani maacha suvada. Naasi vitana ruchi vitana. Balmanimaacha suvada. Balibale maacha gangaru maa. Bhaillo maacha suvada. Balibale maacha gangaru maa. Bhaillo maacha suvada.
I have some problems with my eye. I will not be able to read the Bible, this Bible which I love so much.
Kanti sambadichina koni samashyaluna karunanga. Neen entegaano premiche na Bible lo nudi, neen sadhava lekunnaanu.
I should have told this in the morning. That's why I'm using this mobile Bible.
Neen udheeme chepi undali. Karunanga neen o samashyalu bati, i mobile phone lo devu ni vaakhanne chusi, chadutuna.
I am able to read this because it is bright.
Vantrunna velugunu bati, neen aksharaalu chusi chadhavagalugutuna.
We don't know the reason. I am hundred percent blind in this eye, I cannot see anything, it is full dark. Left, I have got fifty percent eyesight.
Karname ento teleedu, gani, kudikannu puirtiga adika anipinsapunai indi. Edamakannu matram daada piyavay shattham drushthi kaligundhi.
I was affected by Corona last year, January.
Gata samasram, january maasan lo, Corona che, neen o vaadinsabada.
But then after two months, I suddenly, one night, I became blind in this hundred percent.
Redu, redu neraatarvata unnatruundi, iyaka kudikannu puirtiga drushthi kolpoindi.
There is no cure for it, although I have shown many eye surgeons.
Andeeku mandi netra, srasrachike cheswaidjulnu sampratichinappadikini, adika bhaagaudani ke veel ledu uncheparu.
So forgive me, I'm using this and also, I get the verses printed like this in big letters which I am able to read.
Neen o chadhavagalgena, petdaksharaalto, elagu modrinchukunna, vithinu upayagistano, Bible laite chadhavaleno.
You know, I will be taking a series about the mysteries in the evening meetings for the next three days.
Och, i moodinallo, saankala kotallo, neen o Bible lo unnava vidrakale na marmalanu gurinchii, neen o.
Sisters, come and sit this side, why sit in that corner, there is plenty of space here.
Sisters, andar itu jarigandi, itu jarigandi, varautal unnavadi.
Come forward and come this side.
Miritu jarigite vallo staro.
In the morning, I'll be taking on that theme.
Udhekalo, neen o amshem vida, maatraduto ochanu.
And I'll be talking about, in the mornings, I'll be talking about overcoming life and also about the rewards.
Udhekal kotallo, jaya jeevitam gurinchii, daniki ochay bahumanala gurinchii maatraduto.
On the last day, Venice day, the evening meeting is, will be little different, that will be the last meeting.
Chittachivadi kudika bodavaramu, adi bhinanga pratekanga untundi.
Because that meeting is the special anniversary meeting.
Adi pratekinci, i silvar jubli, vaarsika, kootam.
So kindly turn with me to Romans chapter sixteen and verse twenty-five and twenty-six.
Naato kuda, Romula krasnapathrika padaharavadjaim, twenty-five to twenty-seven.
Padhinar, sixteen, twenty-five and twenty-six, shall we read all together?
Twenty-five to twenty-seven combined in Telugu.
Okay, okay, no problem.
Iroveyedunuchirovey, Romula krasnapathrika padaharavadjaimu, iroveyedunuchiroveyeduvachinal kalisunai, andarak kalisichadudam. Samastamayana anney janalu, visvasamunaku vidaylagunatlu, anadhinundi rahasyamga unsavadi, ipputu pratyaksha barasavadi na marmamu, nithya devu ni aagnya prakaramu, pravaktala lekanavala dwara variki telpabadiyunnadi, i marmamunu anusariyunchi unnat na swarta prakaramuganu, Eesu krishthu nagurchina prakatana prakaramuganu, mi munus thira parutstaku shakti mantudunu, advitiyak nana vantudunaina devu ni ki, Eesu krishthu dwara nirantaramu mahimakalgunugaaka amen.
Shall we pray?
Prathinsukunam.
Heavenly Father, tell God, we thank you and praise you and worship you and adore thy holy wonderful name.
Paralok tanri, mi munus, miyaka goppanaavu munu bati, stutinchii, pujinchii, aaradi stuntunavu.
Lord, all what you are is a mystery.
Prabha, mir eemi untunaro, adi gopamarmam.
All what we have done, thou hast done, is also mystery.
Miru malo chesna kharyamu kuda marmamayindi.
What you have kept in store for us, that is also a mystery.
Maakurake, mir edi dachinchinaro, adi kuda marmame.
But in thy word, thou hast revealed these mysteries according to thy commandments.
Itte, nee vaakhanlo, neyaka agnetshupuna, i marmamulunu kotavarku maaku teeta parichinavu.
So dear Lord, even as we look into.
Ee anni jananakku avi pratyaksha parasa badai. The purpose of revelation of the mystery is the obedience of faith. Iyokam marmamu pratyaksha parasa badhalo unnathuvanti udeshmeantate viswaasamanaku vidayulaguta. So these are the secrets regarding God, about man, about death, about resurrection, about heaven, about hell and so many things like this. Devuni guruchi, manu ni guruchi, maranang guruchi, paralokam gurinchii, narakam gurinchii, idhaantuvani guida. Mystery regarding Satan. About church. About Holy Spirit. About everlasting life. You know, all these things. Now it is revealed. It is revealed now. And it is revealed to the apostles and prophets. And they have written down in their, in the scriptures, in the Bible. So when we read the epistles, we understand these mysteries. Manamu ee pratrikalansaduthu unnappudi ee marmamulana arthanchesko galam. The Lord Jesus Christ was, was revealing some of the secrets. And he used parables to explain about the kingdom of God. Then he was telling, "It is revealed unto you, unto the babes." Ayana pasipalu raku ee visiyalu bailu parashabaddaiyani antunadu. So God has revealed even unto the babes? But the scholarly people are not able to understand these mysteries. Aite gnanulaga chepukune lokasamadameeno variki ee visiyalu arthankavu. That is, that is the secret of these mysteries. Now I have, I have sorted out seven such mysteries. Neenu atvanti marmalo, yedintini pratyakinchanu. You can take that verse and read. One is first Timothy chapter three and sixteen. There it is written, "Great is the mystery of godliness." That is one mystery. Mystery of godliness. Then secondly, Colossians chapter one verse twenty-five and twenty-six, don't take it now because we are going to take it again. That is the mystery of the Christ in us, the hope of glory. It is found in Colossians chapter one and verse twenty-five to twenty-six. We are going to study in detail this mystery today. Third mystery is the mystery of his will, Ephesians chapter one and verse nine. Ephesiala kurasnapathrika okatavadyam thobidavachchinalo varayavatna, tana chitta pracaramena deyasankalpanu guruchina marmam. That is his will, that is the will of God is a mystery. And counsel of his will, it is written in verse eleven. Fourthly, Christ and the church. Ephesiala kurasnapathrika okatavadyam thobidavachchinalo varayavatna, tana chitta pracaramena deyasankalpanu guruchina marmam. Ephesiala kurasnapathrika okatavadyam thobidavachchinalo varayavatna, tana chitta pracaramena deyasankalpanu guruchina marmam. Fifth mystery. Gentiles coming to the light. Ephesiala kurasnapathrika okatavadyam thobidavachchinalo varayavatna, tana chitta pracaramena deyasankalpanu guruchina marmam. So there are, there are seven mysteries. The last is mystery of iniquity, second Thessalonian chapter two and verse seven. Out of these seven mysteries, two mysteries are great mysteries. Iyoka marmalanintilo ku da, rendu marmalu, goppa marmalu. And there is, one is mystery of godliness. That is for individuals, a godly life. The Bible says that is a great mystery. One more mystery is a great mystery. That is the relationship between Christ and the church. Apostles says that is a great mystery, I talk regarding church and the Lord Jesus Christ. Today we will be taking one such mystery. That is in Colossians chapter one verse twenty-six. Colossiala kurasnapathrika okatavadyam thiravayavachchinalo kalisunai. There we find about this mystery. So there we find, you can read that two verses. Devuni vaakhyamunu, anaga yugamulalono, taramulalono, marugu cheyebadiyunnadu marmamunu, sampurnamaga prakatinchutaku, me nimittamu nakku appagempabadi na devuni airpart pracaramu, neenu aasanghamanaku parichara ku da naithini. So here the mystery is Christ in you, the hope of glory. That is in twenty-seven. Twenty-seven, okay. Anne janalu ee marmamu iyoka mahima iswariyamu yettido, adi, anaga meyandunna kristu mahima nirikshenayayu unnadu sangathini, devudu tana parishuddilaku tiliyaparasa gori, ipudu a marmamunu variki bailu parachchenu. There are so many things we find about this mystery. That is what we are going to see for a short time. That is Colossians chapter one verse twenty-five onwards. Colossiala kurasnapathrika okatavadyam thiravayavachchinalo kalisunai. Here also we find that mystery is something which is kept a secret. Ikada gu da varayavatna, yugamulalono, taramulalono, marugu cheyebadiyunnadu marmamunu, sampurnamaga prakatinchutaku, me nimittamu nakku appagempabadi na devuni airpart pracaramu, neenu aasanghamanaku parichara ku da naithini. So we are going to take two parts, this phrase. One is Christ in you. And the other is the hope of glory. Then we are going to take the first part, Christ then you. So we are going to, we are going to deep into it, Christ in you. God wanted to dwell in man. That is good, that is the purpose of creation. You know, when we read the creation story in chapter one of Genesis. Adikarnavu okatavadyam lo srusti kramani manam saduthu unnappudu. We find that God is creating one by one. He created heaven and earth. And then he cleaned the earth. And then he created animals, he created vegetation and all that. God created sun and moon and stars. But when he came to creation of man. Then verse twenty-six and twenty-seven, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, Genesis chapter one, we find about the creation of man. Adikarnavu okatavadyam thiravayavachchinalo manavuni srusti niggurinchu chusthunam. There is written, "Let us make man in our image." When he created all other things. He did not say that, "Let us create them in our image." But when he created man, he said, "Let us create man in our image." So we are created in the image of God. God's purpose was this. That he could communicate to a person and, and have fellowship with that person. Devudu a vektittyo sammanankaligi, sambashinchigaligi, a vektito ee sammanam airparshkavali. So unless there is something...
इविट्ली मोट्रबद्धिगा तिमति क्रासना मद्रिपत्रिका मूड़वज्यम पदहारवच्छन
There it is written, great is the mystery of godliness.
निराक्षेपमुगा दायवो बक्तिनिगु उच्चिनम मर्ममु गोप्पदायुन्नदि तिमति क्रासना मद्रिपत्रिका मूड़वज्यम पदहारवच्छन
That is one mystery.
अदि वक्कमर्मम
Mystery of godliness.
दायवो बक्तिनिगु उच्चिनम मर्मम
Then secondly, Colossians chapter 1 verse twenty-five and twenty-six, don't take it now because you are going to take it again.
कोलेस्सीलक्रास्न पत्रिका वक्कतवच्छायुमु
That is the mystery of the Christ in us, the hope of glory.
मी अंधुन्ना कृष्टु महिमा निरीक्षणयय्युन्नाडु अन्नट्वंति
It is found in Colossians chapter 1 and verse twenty-five to twenty-six.
अदि कोलेस्सीलक्रास्न पत्रिका वक्कतवज्यम यरवयाईदु यरवयार वच्छनालो कन्नबढ्दु
We are going to study in detail this mystery today.
ई मर्मान्नि गुरिंचि ई दिनानम नम ध्यानिस्ताम
Third mystery is the mystery of his will, Ephesians chapter 1 and verse nine.
एफसीलक्रास्न पत्रिका वक्कतवज्यम तुभिदवच्छनमुलो रायबड्ना तन चित्त प्रकारम एन दयासंकल्पं उच्चिनम मर्मम
That is, his will, that is the will of God is a mystery.
देवुनी एक चित्तम एन एदि मर्मम
And counsel of his will, it is written in verse eleven.
पदकोणदवच्छनालो अनिगुरिंचि आयना आलोचनक सम्बन्धिंचिनट्वंति मर्म
Ah, fourthly
ओ नालगो दिगा
Christ and the church.
संगमु, कृष्टु संगमु
Ephesians chapter 5 and verse thirty-three, thirty-two, that is a great mystery.
एफसीलक्रास्न पत्रिका ऐदवज्यम ऊपरिंदवच्छनमुलो रायबड्नट्व कृष्टुनु गुच्चि, संगमुनु गुच्चि चेप्पुचुन्नानु इदि गोप्पमर्ममु
Ah, fifth mystery
ऐदव मर्ममु
Gentiles coming to the light.
अन्नेशनलु वेलुगुलो निकरावटम
Ephesians chapter 3 verse three and six.
एफसीलक्रास्न पत्रिका मूड़वज्यम मूडु उच्चारवच्छनालु
And the sixth mystery is the mystery of resurrection.
आरो मर्ममु, पुनरुथ्थानमुनु गुच्चिनम मर्मम
Seventhly, Second Thessalonians chapter 2 and verse seven, mystery of iniquity.
एडवधि तेसलोनिकेलक्रास्ना रेण्डव पत्रिका
So there are, there are seven mysteries.
एडु मर्मालुनाई
The last is mystery of iniquity, Second Thessalonians chapter 2 and verse seven.
तेसलोनिकेलक्रास्ना रेण्डव पत्रिका रेण्डवज्यम एडवच्छनमुलो रायबड्नट्व इदि दुष्टत्वानिगु उच्चिनट्वंति मर्मम
Out of these seven mysteries, two mysteries are great mysteries.
एक मर्मालन्निंटिलो कुड़ा, रेंडु मर्मालु, गोप्पमर्मालु
And there is, one is mystery of godliness.
वक्कती दायवो बक्तिनिगु उच्चिनम मर्मम
Ah, that is for individuals, a godly life.
अदि दायवो बक्तिन, व्यक्तिगतंगा कलिगु उन्नवल्लिस्नट्वंति दायवो बक्तिनिगु उच्चिनम
That is a great mystery.
अदि देवुनी वाक्यं चेप्पुतुद्दे अदि गोप्पमर्ममु
One more mystery is a great mystery.
मरोकती गोप्पमर्ममुनि चेप्पा बडिंदि
That is the relationship between Christ and the church.
अदि कृष्टुकु संगानिकी मध्यलो उन्नट्वंति सम्बन्धानिक
Apostle says, that is a great mystery, I talk regarding a church and the Lord Jesus Christ.
आकरदा, अपोस्तरडु चेप्पुतुन्नाडु, नेनु कृष्टुनु गुच्चियु, संगमुनु गुच्चियु चेप्पुचुन्नानु, इदि गोप्पमर्ममु
So today we will be taking one such mystery
अट्वंति मर्मालो वक्कदानिगुरिंचि इदि नान ध्यानिद्दाम
That is in Colossians chapter 1 verse twenty-six.
अदि कोलेस्सीलक्रास्न पत्रिका वक्कतवज्यम यरवयार वच्छनालु
Colossians chapter 1 verse twenty-five and twenty-six.
कोलेस्सीलक्रास्न पत्रिका वक्कतवज्यम यरवयाईदु यरवयार वच्छनाल कलिस्युनाई
Ah, there we find about this mystery.
ई मर्मान्नि गुरिंचि अकड़त्युस्तुन्नाम
So there we find, you can read that two verses.
अरेंडवच्छनाल सदुतानु, देवुनी वाक्यमुनु, अनगा युगमुललोनु, तरमुललोनु, मरुगुच्चे बडियुन्न मर्ममुनु सम्पूर्णमुगा प्रकटिंचुटकु, मी निमित्तमु नाकु अप्पगेम्पबडिना देवुनी एयरपार्ट प्रकारमु नेनु आ संगमुनकु परिचारकुड़नाईतिनी
So here the mystery is, Christ in you, the hope of glory.
ख्षमिंसंडी, आ, that is in twenty-seven.
Ah, twenty-seven, okay.
यरवयेड़वच्छनमुलो उन्नि, अन्नेशनलो ई मर्ममु एक महिमाइश्वरियमु एटिदो अदि अनगा मी अंधुन्ना कृष्टु, महिमा निरीक्षणयय्युन्नाडु संगतिनी देवुडु तन परिशुद्धलोकु तिलिय पर्चा गोरी, इप्पु आ मर्ममुनु वारिकी बैलपर्चनु
There are so many things we find about this mystery.
ई मर्मान्नि गुरिंचि अनेकमेन विषयालु चुस्तुन्नाम
That is what we are going to see for a short time.
कोदिसमयम आ विषयालु गुरिंचि परिसीलिद्दाम
Ah, that is, Colossians chapter 1 verse twenty-five onwards.
कोलेस्सीलक्रास्न पत्रिका वक्कतवज्यम यरवयाईदु
Here also we find, that mystery is something which is kept a secret.
इकड़कुड़ा रायबडेंदि, युगमुललोनु, तरमुललोनु, मरुगुच्चे बडियुन्न मर्ममु वन रायबडेंदि
So the mystery is kept a secret, for generations now is revealed unto us.
समवत्सरालगा, अनेकत्तरालगा, मरुगुलो उन्सबड्नट्वंति आ मर्ममु बैलपर्च बडिंदि
That is, Christ in you, the hope of glory.
आ मर्ममेटेंटे, मी अंधुन्ना कृष्टु, महिमा निरीक्षणयय्युन्नाडु
So we are going to take two parts, this phrase.
दिन रेंडु बागल गत्युस्ताम
One is, Christ in you.
मी अंधुन्ना कृष्टु
And the other is, the hope of glory.
रेंडवधि, महिमा निरीक्षण, आयुन्नाडु
Then, we are going to take the first part, Christ then you.
तरवात्तम नमो, कृष्टुनु, नी, नी अंधु, निवु, ई रेंडु इंटिनि चुस्ताम
So we are going to, we are going to deep into it, Christ in you.
मी अंधुन्ना कृष्टु, ई सच्चानि पदन त्रोविचुद्दाम
God wanted to dwell in man.
देवुडु मानवुनलो निवसिंस गोरुतुन्नाडु
Ah, that is good, that is the purpose of creation.
सृष्टियप्क उद्देश्यमै अदि
You know, when we read the creation story in chapter one of Genesis
अदिकान्न वक्कतवज्यमलो सृष्टिक्रमानिमनम सदुतुन्नपुडु
Ah, we find that God is creating one by one.
देवुडु वक्कदानिवेंटा वक्कती सृष्टिस्तु उच्चिनट्व चुस्ताम
He created heaven and earth.
आ भूमि आकाशालुन सृजिंचिनाडु
And then he cleaned the, the earth.
आ भूमिनी आयना वेयर जेस्साडु
And then he created animals, he created vegetation and all that.
आ तरवात आयना वृक्षालुनु, तरवात जेन्तुलुनु, आलागु सृष्टिस्तु
God created sun and moon and stars.
अवत सूर्यचंद्र, अक्षत्रालुन जेस्साडु
But when he came to creation of man
आइते मानवुनी सृष्टिंस वल्लिस्यु उच्चिनपुडु
Then verse twenty-six and twenty-seven, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, Genesis chapter one, we find about the creation of man.
अदिकान्न वक्कतवज्यम यरवयाईदु यरवयार यरवयेड़वच्छनालो, मानवुनी सृष्टिनिगुरिंचि चुस्तुन्नाम
There it is written, let us make man in our image.
अकड़ा देवुड़ अंतुन्नाडु, मानस्व रूपमंदु, मानवुनी चेस्तुम
When he created all other things
मिगिल्न अन्यु देवुड़ चेस्साडु
He did not say that, let us create them in our image.
मानपोलिकचोपुना वाट्नि चेद्दाम अनि देवुड़ अनुकोले
But when he created man, he said, let us create man in our image.
आइते देवुडु मानवु सृष्टिंचे संदर्भ उच्चिनपुडु, मानस्व रूपमंदु, मानपोलिकचोपुना नरुनि चेय्यदु
So we are created in the image of God.
मरु देवुनी एक पोलिकलो, देवुनी स्वरूपमलो चेवड्डाम
Ah, God's purpose was this.
देवुनी एक उद्देश्यमिन्दलो एमनगा
That he could communicate to a person and, and have fellowship with that person.
देवुड़ आ व्यक्तित्यो सम्बन्धंकलिगी, सम्बासिंसकलिगी, आ व्यक्तित्यो ई सम्बन्धम एयरपर्चकोवालनी
So unless there is something of God in us, we will not be able to communicate with him.
मानलो देवुनिकी सम्बन्धिंचे एदयन उन्तेने तप्पा, देवु तोमरो सम्बासिंचलेम
Ah, God is able to think.
देवुड़ आलोचिंसकलाडु
God, the knowledge of God, knowledge of Jesus Christ is so high, the wisdom is so high.
प्रवेणी एसु कृष्टु वार्णिगुरिंचिनट्वंति ज्ञानमु, अदि अंत्रो स्थारम एन्दि
Lord Jesus Christ is full of knowledge, full of understanding and full of wisdom.
प्रवेणी एसु कृष्टु वारु, आयना स्थारम एन्ट्वंति लेखिपलेन, ज्ञानंक
The word of God says, it is past finding out, that is, it is so great.
सोदिम्पसेक्यमुकानन्त, ज्ञानंकलिगिनट्वंति वाडु
Such a big knowledge and understanding he had.
अट्वंति ज्ञानमुनु आयन कलिगु उन्नाडु
That is the wisdom of God, or understanding of God, or knowledge of God.
अदि देवुनी एक ज्ञानमु, अदि देवुनी एक विवेचना
Now, when God created man
देवुडु मानवुनी जेस्सनपुडु
A little bit of that came to man also.
देवुलो नकोन्ता मानवुनी कुड़ा संक्रमिंचिंदि
That is why we are all intelligent beings, or we have got intelligence.
अंदुके मानवुलम एन मनमंदरंगा कुड़ा, ज्ञानंकलिगिनट्वंति वारंगा, विवेचिंसकलिगिनवारंगा, आलोचिंसकलिगिन
Man is able to think, man is able to feel, man is able to take decision.
मानवुड़ आलोचिंसकलाडु, अनुभूतिनि पोंदगलाडु, अट्वंति वे, अनुभवनलो कोच्चाडु
Ah, we think.
आलोचिस्ताम
And look at man.
मनश्यु चोडले
He has improved his technology in every area.
तनु सांखेतिकंगा प्रतिविभागनलो कुड़ा, उर्दिमोदुतु उच्चाडु
Now, have you thought of it?
दारिगुरिंचे पड़ेन आलोचिंचार
Ah, you look at the birds.
पक्षल जुडंडी
You know, they are, birds make nests.
आवि गुल्लु गटकुंटाई
Two thousand years ago also, they were, they were making nests just like they make now.
रेंडु वेलसमत्सरालक्रितमु, आवि गुडुनु यत्ला कटकुट्टो उच्चनयो, इप्पु कुड़ा, अत्लांटी कुड़े गटकोकलाव
Ah, they make the same way, they have not improved their technology.
वाट्नु एक सांखेतिका परिज्ञानन, आवि उर्दिपोंदिंचकोले
But, look at man.
आइते मानवुन जुडु
What all he has made.
एन जेस्साडु चुडं
First he was, maybe, he was covering himself with leaves.
आ तनु, आकुलतो तनु तान कपुकुंटु उच्चाडु
Ah, then he made a better, better roof.
तरवाता, पाईना ओकाचक्कती कपु कलिगु उन्तानिकी मधल बेट्याग
Then he found out better and better, and now they are making very high, high buildings with all the modern facilities.
वीटिनी आ सऊकरियालुन अंतकंतकु उर्दिजेस्कुंटु, इप्पु अधुनातनम एन्ट्वंति सऊकरियालुगलिगिनट्वंति एन्तयन बहुनाल निर्मिंचकोगलु
In some places it is very cold, so he made heater, so that the room will be heated.
कोणि प्रांतालो बहुचलिगा उन्नट्वंति कारणंगा, गदि उस्नोक्रतन वेंचे साधनालु तयार
In some places it is very hot, and so he wanted to make it cool, so that he will be comfortable.
कोणि प्रांतालो, उस्नोक्रत अधिकंगा उन्नट्वंति कारणानि बट्टी, दानि वरिंच्डानिकी, गदिनी सल्लगा चेगलिगिनट्वंति अंतरालु
Man invented this fans, man invented dessert cooler, man invented air conditioning.
मानवुडु फैनलं तयार जेस्सनाडु, डेजर्ट कूरललं तयार जेस्सनाडु, एयर कंडीशनलं तयार जेस्साडु
So that our life will be comfortable.
तन वारम मनचीवितम सऊकरियावंतंगा उन्नट्यान
Also the clothes, see the way we have improved our dressing.
मनेक्क वस्त्राल विषयमै, एन्तगा आवि अंतकंतकु मार्पुचेन्दुतु
You take any area, man has been improving himself.
ए विभागनलो चुच्चिनपड़किनी, मानवुडु अंतकंतकु उर्दिचेन्दुतुन्नाडु
Ah, he invented fridge, he invented washing machine, he invented electricity, he invented fans and whatnot.
फ्रिजगनुकुन्नाडु, वाशिंग विषयनगनुकुन्नाडु, फैनगनुकुनि केम लेदु, अन्नि गनुकुन्नाडु
Ah, in every area of our life, they started improving it.
मनचीवितलोनु प्रतिविभागारिकी सम्बन्धिंचिनट्वंति दांतलो, तनु अंतकंतकु नायपुन्न्यतान बट्टी उर्दिजेस्कुंटो
But the birds in there or the animals, they have not improved their technology.
एक पक्षलगानि, जेन्तुलगानि, वाट्नु एक सांखेतिकनु एन्तमात्रम उर्दिचेस्कोले
God has given them some little gift with which they are existing, that's all.
देवुडु वाट्नुकनु ग्रिंजिनट्वंति, फरिमितम एन्ट्वंति ज्ञानान्नि बट्टी जीविंसकलु
What I am trying to say, we are created in his image.
नेन एन चेप्पा गोरुतुन्नारंटे, मनमु आयन स्वरूपमलो चेवड्डाम
Ah, we have a body.
मनकोकस्सेरीरबुंदि
And the animals also have a body.
जेन्तुलकुड़ा सिरिनमुंदि
But we have a soul, but the animals do not have soul.
मनकु आत्म उन्दि, आइते जेन्तुलकु आत्म लेदु
Ah, they, they are not able to differentiate between, for example, sister, daughter, mother, father, they don't know the difference.
आवि वाट्नुकी, चल्ली, तम्मुडु, अम्मा, नान्ना, ई तेडाले एन तिलियदु
No relationships.
आ बंदम एन एदि अंतगा उन्नदु
Ah, so in every area we find, there is lot of difference between animals and man.
प्रतिविभागनलो कुड़ा चुस्ते, जेन्तुलकु मनशिकी वित्यासमुन्नट्व गुर्तिंचकलाव
And moreover, we have got spirit.
अंतिरगत, अदि मनम आत्मन कलिगु उन्नाप
Lord breathed and we became a soul, chapter two says.
देवुडु ऊदगा, मानवुडु जीविंसु प्राणी आयनो वन रायबडेंदि
All other animals, he did not breathe.
मिगिल्न जेन्तुलु विटेन्निट्टी चेस्नपुडु
He only spoke and they were created.
आयना तनु ऊदलेदु, आयना पलिकिनाडु, आवि उरिकिलो निकोच्चाय
But in the case of man, he, he breathed into him.
आइते मानवुनीलो निकोच्च, विषयम उच्चिनपुडु, आयना तन स्वासमुनु ऊदगा, नरुडु जीविंसु प्राणी, लेक
We know that it is, it is found in Genesis chapter two, and we became a living soul.
अदिकान्नमु रेण्डवज्यमलो नम चुस्तामु, नरुडु जीविंसु प्राणी आयनो, जीव आत्मा आयनो
Why did God breathe on us?
एन्दुकु आयना जीवमायुनु मनलो निके ऊद्दाडु
His spirit came upon us.
आयन आत्म, मानमीदकोच्चिंदि
So man has God, body, soul and spirit.
मानवुडु, शरीरमु, प्राणमु, आत्म, मूडिंटिनि कलिगु उन्नाडु
And that is why we are able to relate to God.
अंदुके मनमु, देवुनिकी सम्बन्धंकलिगु उन्नगलमु
That is why he is able to communicate to us.
कविटे, देवुडु मनतो माट्ठाड़ा कलिगिनवाडुगा उन्नाडु
That is why we are able to communicate to him.
आ रीतिगा मनं कुड़ा देवुनितो सम्बासिंसकलम
Ah, so God created man, so that he will have a loving, obedient relationship to his creator.
आ सृष्टिकर्तकु, प्रेमतो कुडिना, विधैयत कलिगिनट्वंति, जीवितम, मनकलिगु उन्डारणी सृष्टिंचाडु
He has been given an amount of liberty, freedom.
मानवुनिकी कोन्ता स्वतंत्रम उब्बडिंदि
But we find our parents adamantive, they decided to obey Satan and not to obey God.
आइते मन आदिमत्तलिदनुलु, वारु देवुनिकीलो बट्टानिकु बदलगा, साथानकुलो बट्टट्टगा मनं चुस्तुन्नाम
So man fell in sin.
आ कारणंगा मानवुडु पापनलो पडिपयाडु
So right from that time
आ समयमुनुंदि
Man is seeking God.
मानवुडु देवुनी वेदुकुतुन्नाडु
He is not able to find God, where is God, who is God, do I have anything to do with God, but at the same time he knows there is a God.
देवुड़ एकड़ उन्नाडु, देवुड़ एलागुंटाडु, अप्पट्नुंदि कुड़ा, देवुनी कनुगुरनानिकम मानवुडु प्रयत्न
So they were, they were coming to, coming out with so many theories.
आ कारणानि बट्टी, वारु देवुड़ इलागुंटाड़िलागुंटाड़न, अनेकमेना सिद्धांतालु कल्पिंचु
They have been trying to find out methods to overcome this problem.
ई समस्यन, देवुड़ एवरो तेलसुकोवालनट्वंति समस्यनु अधिकमिंच्डानिकी, वार अनेकमेन ट्वंति वाट्नी कल्पिंचु
But man is not able to find God.
आइते मानवुड़ देवुनी कनुकोले
They are in utter darkness regarding God.
देवुनी विषयमै, स्पूर्ति, अंदकारमलो उन्नार
But Lord decided to give man the word.
आइते देवुडु, मानवुनिकी, तन वाक्यम इवालनी संकल्पिंचाडु
So in the Old Testament, he spoke to us through the prophets.
पातनिमंदनकालनलो, देवुड़ तन प्रवक्तलद्वारम माट्ठाड़तो
Little by little he was communicating to man.
कोच्चन कोच्चन, कोच्चन कोच्चन, मानवुनितो आयन माट्ठाड़तु, बैलपर्च
Hebrews chapter 1 and verse 1.
एब्रिलक्रास्न पत्रिका वक्कतवज्यम वक्कतवच्छनालो
Somebody read.
राइचेस्यारेंजल पुरोकालमंदु, नाना समयमुलो
Yes.
नाना विदमुलगा, मन प्रवक्तल, प्रवक्तलद्वारम मन पितरुतो माट्लाडिन देवुडु, ई दिनमुला अंतमंदु कुमारुनीद्वारम मनतो माट्लाडिनु
Ah, in the past he was speaking to us through the prophets.
पुरोकालमंदु, आयन प्रवक्तलद्वारम मनतो माट्ठाड़तो
So in the Old Testament, we find the prophets.
पातनिमंदनकालनलो प्रवक्तलन मन चुस्तुन्नाम
First five books were written by, written by Moses.
मधते ऐदु द्रंदालु, मोशे द्वाराव रायबड्डाई
And the subsequent books were written by many other people.
आ तरवाति पुस्तकमुलु, एर्वेरु वेत्थुलद्वाराव रायबड्डाई
We find David, we find Solomon, we find Isaiah, Ezekiel, Jeremiah, Joel, Amos and a big list.
आ दाविदु, तरवात एशया, इर्मिया, सोलोमोनु, तरवात प्रवक्तलु, एसकेल निंचे, दानियलु, होशया, योवेला, मस्वोब्द्या
All what their prophecies put together, we find, God is communicating to man.
ई पुस्तकालन निटिनि चदोटंद्वारा, देवुडु, मानवुनकु, तन सम्बासिंसकोरुतुन्नाडु अन्नट्वंति विषय मनकार्तम
But Hebrews 1:1 says
आइते हेब्रिलक्रास्न पत्रिका वक्कतवज्यम
In these last days, he is speaking to us through his son.
ई दिनमुला अंतमंदु, तन कुमारुनीद्वारतो मनतो माट्ठाड़तुन्नाडु जेप्पुन्नाडु
Ah, so during the time of the ministry of Jesus Christ
एसु कृष्टु प्रभुवारी परिचरिया दिनालो
Ah, he revealed these mysteries to us.
ई मर्ममुलनु आयन प्रत्यक्ष परिचाडु
He spoke to us in a way we can understand.
मनं ग्रहिंसकलिगिनट्वंति विधानलो
Through small, small parables.
चिन्न चिन्न उपमानालद्वारा
And also by giving, talking about the kingdom of God.
देवुनी राज्यमुनु गुरिंचि माट्लाडित्वारा
That is what we find in the Gospels.
सुवर्तलो विषयालु नम नम चुस्ताम
But Jesus said
आइते एसु प्रभु
I have many more things to tell you.
नेन मिकु चप्पडानिका अनेक संगतलु उन्नाविकानि
But you cannot receive it now.
आइते इप्पु मेरु ग्रहिंसले ईस्तिलो उन्नारु
So I will go to heaven
नेन परलोकानिकेल्तान
I will ask the Father
नेन तंडिन अडुतान
And he will send the Holy Spirit to us.
आयन परिशुद्धात्मुनु मी कोरक्पम्पेस्ताडु
Ah, so Holy Spirit came into this world on the day of Pentecost.
पेंटेकॉस्ट दिनलो, एसु, परिशुद्धात्मु देवुडु भूमि दिकोच्चाडु
And the church was established.
संगम आविर्भयिंचिंदि
Yes, Holy Spirit fell upon the believers who were waiting in prayer in Jerusalem.
प्रार्थनलो कन्नपेड्डुनट्वंति वारे, मेदिकी परिशुद्धात्मुडु दिग्गी उच्चिनट्व चुस्ताम
So nowadays, the Lord is speaking to us and he is having fellowship with us.
ई दिनालो, प्रभु मनतो माट्ठाड़तुन्नाडु, मनतो सहवासंकलिगु उन्नाडु
And Christ is able to live in us.
कृष्टु प्रभु, मानलो निवसिंसकलुगु उन्नाडु
Ah, that is, Christ in you.
मी अंधुन्ना कृष्टु
When you were in sin
मीर पापनलो उन्नपुडु
Ah, Christ could not come into you.
नीलो निके कृष्टु प्रभु राल्येकुन्नाडु
Because God is a holy God
आयन परिशुद्धलेन देवुडु
Man is a sinner.
मानवुडु पापी
And he cannot live there.
आयन अकड़ निवसिंसलेदु
And so first he made a provision by which the sin problem can be settled.
मधता, पापमु अनि ई समस्यकु, परिष्कारम आयन कनुकुन्नाडु
That is why he died on the cross.
आ कारणंगा, आयन कुमारुडु सिल्वमीदम अरणि
He did not commit any sin.
आयन पापन चेलेदु
But he became sin for us.
आयन मनकोरकु पापमुगा चेवड्डाडु
He took our punishment upon him.
आयन मनशिक्षण तनवीदम रोस्कुन्नाडु
Anybody, anywhere in the world, anytime, calls upon the name of the Lord and repents of his sin and accepts Jesus Christ
ई लोकमुलो, ए प्रांतमुलो, एवरैन, एकड़ैन, सर
Ah.
तन पापमुल विषयमै, पच्चात्ता पडिम, मार्मनस्तु
Ah.
एसु कृष्टु प्रभुनु रक्षेकुनिगा तन स्वीकरिंचिनट्व आइते, आ व्यक्ति रक्षिंस
Then what happens?
अप्पडे जरुतुद्दे
Christ comes and dwells in us.
कृष्टु आ व्यक्ति लो निकोच्चि, तनलो निवसिस्ताडु
Ah, two things happen actually.
रेंडु विषयालु जरुतुडाई
He comes and lives in us.
आयन उच्चि मनलो निवसिस्ताडु
And we become part of himself, Christ in you and you in Christ.
मीर कृष्टुलो निकोस्तुन्नाडु, कृष्टु मीलो निकोस्तुन्नाडु, मीर कृष्टुलो निकेल्तुन्नाडु
Ah, that is We become part of the body of Jesus Christ, Christ in you and you in Christ.
कृष्टु मीलो उन्नाडु, मीर कृष्टु एसु प्रभु एक शरीरमलो भागंगा चेवड्डाडु
All these truths we know, we have heard so many messages, we have read the word of God.
ई सच्चालु मनमकु तेलसु, मनम चदिनाम, अनेकमेन वर्तमानालु विन्नामु, देवुनी वाक्यलो रायबड्डाई
So God wants to dwell in us.
देवुडु मनलो निवसिंपगोरुतुन्नाडु
The Lord is telling, abide in me and I in you.
आ, नायंदु मीरु, मी अंधु नेनु निवसिंसु
My words may abide in you.
नामाट्ठलु मी अंधु निलिच्ची उन्डाली
So God wants to dwell in us.
देवुडु मनलो निवसिंसकोरुतुन्नाडु
Ah, 1 Corinthians chapter 3 and verse sixteen.
कोरंटीलक्रास्न मद्रिपत्रिका मूड़वज्यम पदहारवच्छनम
Knowing that you are the temple of God and that the spirit of God dwells in you.
मीर देवुनी आलयमयुन्नारणियु, देवुनी आत्ममीलो निवसिंसुचुन्नाडनियु, मीर एरगरा
You are the temple of God.
मीर देवुनी आलयमयुन्नाडु
The spirit of God is dwelling in you.
देवुनी आत्ममीलो निवसिंसुचुन्नाडु
1 Corinthians chapter 6 verse nineteen, twenty.
कोरंटीलक्रास्न मद्रिपत्रिका आरोवज्यम पंतम मेर्वय वच्छनालु
What, knowing that your body is the temple of the Holy Spirit.
मी देहमु, देवुनी वलनम ई कनुग्रहिप्पबडी, मीलो नुन्ना परिशुद्धात्मकु आलयमयुन्नादन अनि मीर एरगरा
Ah, you are not yourself, your Lord.
मीर मी सोत्तुकार
But you are bought with a price, therefore glorify God in your body and in your spirit which are gods.
विलुव पेट्टी कोनबडिन वार गनुका, मी देहमुतो देवुनी महिमा पर्चुडी
Ah, also Ephesians chapter 3 and verse seventeen.
एफसीलक्रास्न पत्रिका मूड़वज्यम पदहेड़वच्छनम
That Christ may dwell in your hearts by faith.
पदहेदु निच पज्यंद कल्षणायते मध्यलो उन्दि, कृष्टु मी हुर्देमुलुलो विस्वासमुद्वारा निवसिंसुन
That you being rooted and grounded in love.
कविटे, मीर मध्यलो, देवुनी परिस, सम्पूर्णतेन्दु, पूर्णुल अगुनोट्लुगा, प्रेमयेन्दु, वेयरु पारी स्तेरपडाली
So when we are born again
मनमु तिरिगि जन्मिंचिनपुडु
Christ comes and dwells in us and we become the temple of the Holy Spirit.
कृष्टु प्रभु मनलो निकोच्चि निवसिस्तुन्नाडु, मनमु परिशुद्धात्मक आलयंगा चेवड्डाडु
That is, Christ in you.
अदि, मी अंधुन्ना कृष्टु अने माटकार्तम
So he dwells in us and he has fellowship with us.
आयन मनलो निवसिस्तुन्नाडु, मनतो सहवासमु सम्बन्धंकलिगु उन्नाडु
We can experience God in our life.
मनचीवितलो, मनमु देवुनी अनुभविंसकलम
Um, the other day, we were in North India
मीतक मुंदू वक्कताय संदर्भलो, उत्तर इंदुदेशनलो उन्नामु
I had heard of a man who is coming attending our meetings somewhere in North India.
उत्तर इंदुदेशनलो एदो वक्कछोटा, ओक व्यक्ति, न सहवासानिकोस्तु, उडिकल
I know his name, but I didn't know much about his testimony.
आ व्यक्ति नेन एरुगुदुनुगाने, आत्न साक्षानिगुरिंचि नाकत्तगा तिलियदु
So I asked him
नेन आयन नडिगन
You know what he said?
आयन एन जेप्परंटे
Ah, when he was very small
तनु सदचिन्न वैस्लो
His parents handed him over to one sadhu, one sanyasi.
ओक सादु, लेक सन्यासिकी, तन तलिदनुलो अप्पगिंचिनारु
So the boy was staying with that, with that man for few years.
कोणि समत्सरालु आ सन्यासितो कल्से जीविंचाडु
After a few years, he came back home.
कोणि समत्सराल तरतरता, संता इंटिकी तिरिवोच्चाडु
Then he started going to school and he studied up to Then he started going to school and he studied up to 12th standard.
आ तरवाता तनु एक पाठशालक वेल्डप्रारमिंची पन्नड़ तराते वरक चद्दव
But all his life he has been seeking God.
आइते तनसिविता कालमंतत्ल गुड़ा देवुणी वेदकतु उच्च
And he says he had twenty-eight gurus.
तनकु इरवागेन विदमंदु गुरुर उन्नारु अन्न जप्पड
He will have one person as a guru
ओक विक्ति तन गुरुगा बेट्कुन्ड
And he'll be with him or he will be following him, but then he finds he is also a man like me.
तनु ओक गुरुनु कोण्डिनालु वेम्बडिस्त चिमरकी ई विक्ति गुड़ा नालां
Later he was going on changing his gurus.
आ विक्ति गुड़ा नालांटिवाडन देलस्कुनी, मरोक गुरुदगरकी आयन गुरुची देलस्कुनी, मरोक गुरु इत्राव ओकन तरवातो कन्नी मारुस्तु एल्ले
And then he said I heard about Jesus Christ.
अप्पुर नैनु येसु कृष्टु प्रभुवारी गुर्ची विन्नानु
And I stopped searching for any more gurus.
इकन नैन इनका वेरे गुरुल एवर्निगुरिंची गुड़ा वेदकलेडु
Because Lord Jesus Christ is the ultimate, once you have a Lord Jesus Christ then you don't have to seek for any more gurus.
प्रभु ने येसु कृष्टु अने निवकरुगुन्नावंते, इकन वेरे गुरुलन वेदकवल्स नागच्छम उन्डादु
You have come to the end of searching God because God has come into your life.
नी ओक वेदकलाटलो, बुगिपुकनी उच्चिराव प्रभु ने येसु कृष्टुवारने कनुगुन्नापुडु
So he says I have got the Jagat Guru, that is eternal God as my guru now.
इप्पुर अदन जप्पडु, प्रभु ने येसु कृष्टुवारुन ना जगत गुरु सुष्टिघर्तयन देवुड़ू आयन नाक वरक उच्च
Knowing God is the greatest thing in the world.
देवुणी एरुगुटा अनेदि ई लोकमलो अथिको प्पसंगति
Many years ago I was traveling from Jammu to Patankot, that is in Punjab.
अनेक समझरालकिन दत्त नैन जम्मूनुंडी, पंजाबलो उन्नट्वंती पटानकोट अनेस्तलानिक
I was serving in those areas.
आ प्रांतलो नैन सेवा जेस्तुन्न
So there was an young man sitting in the bus.
ओक यवन अस्तुरु बसलो कुर्छुन्डीन
So I asked him, who are you, what are you, what is your name and all with the purpose that I can share the gospel.
नैन सुवार्ता पन्स्कुड़नका अवकाशम उन्डादुनी, आ विक्ति नी, नीव एवरु, नी पेर एन्टी, नी एन्जेस्ट उन्त अन्न प्रश्नलु अडुतो उच्च
Then he said, I want to know God.
आ विक्ति नाडु नैन देवुणी तेलस्को
So he said behind the seat his guru is sitting.
तन वेनका गुरु उन्नटानी तन चुस्य
He says I came and through this guru I want to know God.
ई गुरु, तन वेनका उन्नट्वंती गुरुनु जुपिच्चा आयन द्वारा नैन देवुणी तेलस्को गोरतुन्नाडु
Then I said, I found God.
नैनु देवुणी कनुगुन्नानु अन्न जप्पड
I found God by knowing Jesus Christ.
येसु कृष्टु प्रभु ने एरुगुटद्वारा नैन देवुणी कनुगुन्नानु अन्न जप्पड
Then he said, look at me.
नावे नावे इप्पु चूड़वन्नाडु
He said, you know God?
देवुणाति नीक कनुगुन्न
You have found God?
देवुणी कनुगुन्नाव
This is the greatest of all knowledge.
ज्ञानमंद चक्करो गुड़ा अथिको प्पसंगति अदि
I said, yes, I found God.
नैन जप्पड, अवुनु नैन देवुणी कनुगुन्नानु
Then I said, have you heard of Jesus Christ?
येसु कृष्टु प्रभुवारी गुरिंची नुविन्नाडु
We didn't know much about Jesus Christ.
येसु कृष्टु प्रभुवारी गुरिंची एक्को अतन
So I gave him some tracts or some gospel which I had, I shared with him.
नादगर नट्वंती सुवार्ता करपत्रालु, पुस्तकमु अतंतो
I said, man is searching God but you can never find.
नैन अन्नानु, मानवुड़ देवुणी करकु वेदकुतुन्नाडु गानी
No man has seen God at any time.
ए मानवुडैनु, एप्पुर एनु देवुणी
But God revealed himself through Jesus Christ.
तंडिनमुनुन्ना द्वितीय कुमारुडे, अनगा येसु कृष्टु प्रभुवारे, आयन नु मानकु बैलपर
I said, believe in him.
नैन जप्पड, आयनी अंदु विस्व
And I could share the gospel with him.
सुवार्तान अतंतो पन्स्कु
What I am trying to say
नैन नैन चप्पक गोरतुन
Yes, but in India people are seeking for true God.
मान भारत देशलो प्रजलु देवुणी वेदकतु उन्नारु
Many people do not know about Jesus Christ.
आइते अनेकमंदिके येसु कृष्टु प्रभुवार
They have not heard the gospel.
वार सुवार्तन विनलेडु
They had no occasion to hear the gospel.
वार आ सुवार्त सच्यानी विरणानिको ओपिकलेडु
Many people, they may know the truth
अनेकमंदिके सच्यम तेलसी उन्डोत्सु
But they don't want to accept it.
आइते दान अंगीकरिंचनानिके वारे मानसिस्त
Because of many other reasons.
अनेक कारणाल्न बटि
Oh, they say we have to leave our kulam, we have to leave our caste, we have to leave our society, we have to leave our religion, oh, all that is terrible to me, I don't want to do it.
मैं कुलान्नी, मथान्नी, प्रजलनु अंदर्नी पोगोटकोवल्स उस्तुन्दी अन्नेट्वंती तलाम
So he passes through a crisis.
वन
He will pass through a crisis.
आ तनोका कृष्टम अन्नेट्वंती परिस्थिति उन्डावेल्ट
Lord is not forcing anybody to believe in him, follow him.
देवुड़ै एवरु गुड़ा तनु वेम्बडिंसालनी, आयन आयवर्नी बलवंत पेट्ट
But he has made himself very clear.
आयन अंतोस्फर्स्टंगा बैलपर
If you believe in him, follow his footsteps, he will find God.
आयन एवरैना वेदकी, आयन अडुविजाडलो नाडिस्त्रन किश्त पड़ते वार आयन कनुगुन्ट
So we come, now we come to the second part.
इप्पुर रेंडो भागानिको दाम
So Christ in you is the hope of glory.
मी अंदुन्ना कृष्टु महिमा निरीक्षणाय
Ah, this phrase, hope of glory
महिमा निरीक्षण अने ई पदम
It has got two parts.
रेंडु भागाल उन्नाई
One is hope.
वकटेमु निरीक्षण
The other is glory.
रेंडो अदि महिमा
So knowing Christ, having Christ is the hope for glory.
कृष्ट येसु प्रभु ने एरुगुटा अनेदि, महिमा कोरक अन्नेट्वंती निरीक्षण गलगेस्तुन्दी
We know we will get salvation.
मानमु रक्षण पोदुतुन्नाम अन्न एरुगु
That is our sins will be forgiven.
अनगा मान पापमुलु क्षमींच
And our name will be written in the book of life.
मान पेर जीवग्रंधनलो रायवड्डुतुन्दी
And we will go to heaven when we leave this body.
ई ओक सरीरानी विच्च पेट्टी तरवातम मानम परलोकानिक एल्टाम
Ah, that is the hope of every believer.
अदि प्रति विस्वासी ओका निरीक्षण
Now there are two things.
रेंडु विषयाल उन्नाई
One is getting entrance into heaven.
परलोकानिके प्रवेशिंकलिगुटु
Ah, the other is getting the rewards from him.
प्रभुनुंडी भहमानालु पोदु
Ah, that is what we are going to study from tomorrow onwards.
रेपट्टुनुंडी आ विषयाल नमानम ध्यानिंच
Now what is the meaning of hope?
निरीक्षण अने माटक अर्थम एन्टी
It is a divine guarantee and a confident expectation.
दाईविकमायन अट्वंती
Divine guarantee.
निच्छेत दाईविकमायन अट्वंती निच्छेत
What is, what is hope?
निरीक्षण अन्त एन्टी
It has got a part by God that is a guarantee given by God.
अदि देवुणी द्वारा अनुग्रहिंसा बढिन अट्वंती निच्छेत
He says, I will, you will come to heaven if you are absent from the body, present with the presence of the Lord.
आयन इच्चन अट्वंती निच्छेत एन्टी, आयनी अंदु नमीकेंची रक्षण पोदिन कारणानि बटि सरीरान विच्च पेट्टे, परलोकानिलो प्रवेशिस्त
Ah, we know what is guarantee.
निच्छेत अने
Suppose you buy a mobile or a watch, they will give you a guarantee.
एदेन मान मोबाइलो वाच्चकुन्ते वालु गारेंटीस्त
Ah, guarantee is for one year.
समझरानिकी गारेंटी
Anything happens to this machine, bring it, we will replace it without cost.
देनिकी एदेन समस्या उस्ते, मीरु समझरालो पला गारेंटीकालनलो तिस्कु
And we believe it and buy it.
वाल दानिकी निबंधनकु कट्टुबडिम
Good companies, they honor the guarantee.
वारु आयोक निबंधनु वार गवर्विस्त
You take your machine which is not working, you take it, they will replace the parts or give a new unit free, that is a guarantee.
ई गारेंटीलो निच्छेतलो निबंधनलो उन्नट्वंती सच्मेदन्ती, एदेन समस्या उस्ते दानी समानिचन भागानिगानी पूर्तिगा
God is guaranteeing glory to us.
देवुड़ू मानकु आ महिमानु निच्छयमुगा वाग्धानं जेस्तुन
That is from God's side.
अदि देवुणी वायपुनुंडी
And from our side
मान वायपुनुंडी
We expect it confidently, that is we have got a confidence.
मानकु देवुड़ू वाग्धानं चेस्याडु काविटी, इलि तप्पकुन्ना जरुगुतुन्दी अन्नेट्वंती निच्छेत मानकु कलुगुतुन्दी
Ah, so hope is a divine guarantee from God's side and a confident expectation from our side.
देवुणी वायपुनुंडी, देवुड़ू अनुग्रहिंचे निच्छेत ओक वायपायते मानमु देवुड़ू तप्पकुन्नाई इदिना एडल जरिगिस्त आडु अनि कलिगु उन्डेट्वंती द्रुडनमिका, ई रेंडु कुड़ा निरीक्षण अने माटलो ईमडी उन्नाई
The word of God says
देवुणी वाक्यं जप्पु
This is the mystery.
अदि मर्मम
That Christ in you the hope of glory.
मी अंदुन्ना कृष्टु महिमा निरीक्षणाय ययुन्नाडु
He gives you a hope.
आयन ओक निरीक्षण इस्तुन्नाडु
And we are expecting that we will get that what he has promised.
आयन एदेइते वाग्धानं चेस्याडु, अदि तप्पकुन्डा पोंददु मानन निच्छेत मानन कलिगु उन्नाम
And now he guarantees glory to us.
मानकु आयन आ महिमानु वाग्धानं चेस्याडु
We will be studying more about it in the next few days.
तदु पर दिनालो मान देनिगुरिंची मरिंत एक्कोगा ध्यानं जेस
What is glory?
महिमा अन्त एन्टी
It is magnificence, magnificence.
अदि
Greatness.
गोप्पा द आट्ट विस्थारमाय[1265.85]
Ah, power.
अधिकारम कलिगेस्ता.
Strength.
बलम.
Christ is the hope for us.
कृष्टि ये सुप्रभु ये मान निरीक्षण यय्युन्नाडु.
And our hope is that we will be like him. That is our hope.
मनम कालिगिन निरीक्षण एंटेंटे मनम आयननु पोली उन्तामु.
Ah, when he comes.
आयन अप्रत्यक्षम एनपुडु.
We will become like him.
मनम आयन अपोलिकलो निकमार्च.
So who is our hope?
मान निरीक्षण एवरु.
The Lord Jesus Christ is our hope.
प्रभु ये ये सुकृष्ट वारे मान निरीक्षण.
That we will be like him.
मनम आयन अपोली उन्तामु.
We will, he will give us his glory.
आयन तनम महिमनु मानक इस्ताडु.
When we read chapter seventeen, that is the prayer of Jesus Christ.
योहानस्वर्त पदिहेड़वत्यायुलो प्रभु ये ये सुकृष्ट वार जेसन अट्वेंटी प्रार्थना.
He says, I have given my glory to them.
नेनु ना महिमनु वारीकी इच्छिति नी अंतुनाडु.
So this is the great hope glory which God has given to us.
देवुड़ आयका आ गोप्पम महिमा निरीक्षणु मानक अनुक्रहिंचनाडु.
So, ah, there are two parts.
अंदलो रेंड बागालुनाई.
One is a salvation or forgiveness of sin.
रक्षण लेका पाप क्षमापन.
Ephesians chapter two talks about this in chapter two, Ephesians chapter two.
एफएसीलो क्रासन पत्रिका रेंड वत्यायु ई अपराधमलकु क्षमापन अने विषयांग गुरिंची माट्र आड़तुन्दी.
Salvation is given to us as a gift.
रक्षण अनेदी मानकु उचितमुगा अनुक्रहिंसा बढ़ीन.
Any amount of money you will not be able to buy salvation.
नु एम्ता डब्बू जेलिंचिना रक्षण अनु कोनालेवु.
Ah, it is given by, given by grace. It is given free to each one of us.
अदि कृपत धारा उचितमुगा मान अंदरकी कुड़ा अनुक्रहिंसा बढ़ीन.
So Ephesians chapter two verse eight says.
एफएसीलो क्रासन पत्रिका रेंड वत्यायु एनविदो वच्चनं जप्तुन्दी.
That it is given as a gift lest any man boast.
अदि कृपत चेतने अनुक्रहिंसा बढ़ीन अदि अदि मी वालन कालिगिन अदे गादु कावट्टी एवरुनु अतिसय पड़ा वील लेदु.
Ah, if we, if we work for salvation.
मान रक्षण कोरकु मनम ओका वेला प्रयास पड़िउटे.
Then man will boast.
मनुष्य अत्सेस्ताडु.
I got, by paying two crores, I got salvation.
नेनु रेंड कोर्ट चेलिंची रक्षण अनु संपादिंचको केलिन अन्न चेप्ता.
So God doesn't want man to boast that he salvation.
रक्षण.
So he gives it free to us.
रक्षण विषय लो ये मानुड़ कुड़ा अत्सेहिंसा लेदु कावट्टी देवुड़ उचितमुगा अनुक्रहिंचनाडु.
He, he has given to us as a gift.
देवुड़ दीनिक उचितमुगा अनुक्रहिंचनाडु.
And we have received it by faith.
मनमु दान नी विश्वासमध्वारा पोंदी उन्नाम.
We don't have to work for it.
दानी कोरकु मनम एम्परयास पड़न अगते.
Ah, Lord has already done the work on the cross.
आयन इप्पड़ीके सिलिवलो दानी सम्मानिंचन कार्याने चेसी मुगिंचाडु.
That is our hope that we will be in the presence of the Lord.
मनमु देवुनी ओका सन्निदिलो उन्नतनाइंटुनाम अने निच्छेता कालिगु उन्नाम.
If there is anybody here who is listening to me, if you have not accepted Jesus Christ.
ई समय लो विंटुन्ना वारलो एवरेना ये सुकृष्ट प्रभु वार नी ईलागु अंगीकरिंची अनुभविंसक पोते.
Ah, then today is the day of salvation.
नेडे रक्षण दिनम.
Wherever you are.
नु वेकड़ उन्ना.
Kneel down.
मोखरिंचु.
As the Lord.
प्रभु नडु.
Have mercy upon me.
प्रभु आन अनु करणिंचु.
Come into my life.
ना जीवितन लो निकरा.
Lord, give me salvation.
प्रभु आ रक्षण अनु नाकु प्रसादिंचु.
Give me joy unspeakable and full of glory.
चप्पर शक्यमुनु महिमायुक्तो ने संतोषिमु नाक अनुक्रहिंचु.
Give me peace with pass of all understanding.
समस्त ज्ञानमुनकु मिच्छिन देवुनी समाधानमु नाक अनुक्रहिंचु.
Come into my life.
ना जीवितन लो निकरा.
But many times we say no, 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 not now.
अनेक परियायलु वरबु इप्पड़े कादु.
We don't allow him to come into my life.
ई जीवितन लो निकी प्रभु प्रवेशिंचन दानी का अनुभविंचा.
Oh, we think we will lose many things.
नी वालागुंटे.
Oh, I cannot enjoy this world.
ई लोकाने नेनारु.
I cannot live as I like.
नेनु ई लोकस्तोल वाली जीवि.
I want to live for myself.
नेनु नाक कोरके जीविंचकोरुतुनाम.
So we hold on, we close out the doors.
मान हृदय द्वारालु मान मुसीबेट कुंटा लो निके रानीवा मनमतिंचम.
The result is.
पलित अमेंटी.
You are not able to know God.
देवुन नेरगलेम.
You are, you are not able to grow in, into the very image of Jesus Christ.
ये सुकृष्ट प्रभु वार ये का पोलिकलो निके निव मार्च बाडलेवु.
And a day will come when you are to face death, you will have to go to hell.
मान नान नेदुरुकुने दिनम वच्चन अपुडु नारक आग्नि के वेलताव.
Ah, Lord is giving to you today.
देवुड़ ई दिनाने निकोरके इस्तुन्ना.
Accept him.
अंगीकरिंचु.
When God is knocking at the door of your heart.
देवुड़ नी हृदय पु तरपुर दली चुड़ी तट्टचुंडगा.
Harden not your heart.
नी हृदयाने कटिन परच्चु.
Allow him to come inside.
आयन नी हृदय लो निकरा वादा निका अनुभविंचु.
Ah, if you have any doubts.
संदेहालुन्टे.
If you have got any fears.
बयालुन्टे.
If you have got some insecurities.
अबद्रता बावुमुन्टे.
Ah, tell him, tell him.
आयन तो चप्पु.
Ah, call unto me and I will answer thee.
आयन नी लो निकोस्ते वाट निकी समस्या परिष्कारविस्ता.
You can call him.
आयन न पिलोव्चु.
Call him from anywhere.
आयनकु मरपेट्चु एकक नीचे.
He says, come and let us reason together.
आ प्रभु अंतुनाडु रण्डी मान विवादमु दीर्थ चुकंदामु.
Ah, we can go to him.
आयन दोकरके मान वेलोच.
Any, any time.
ए समय मेंने.
Any problems.
ए समस्या कोरके ने वेलोच.
There are many people who have paid heavy price for following the footsteps of Jesus.
ये सुकृष्ट प्रभु वार ये कड़ुजाड़लु व्यम्मिंचन दानी के अनेक मंदी गोप्पा क्रायम जेलिंचार.
One couple has come forward for Lord's work and they, they were with us in Coimbatore.
कोयम वोकस दंपतलु वारु प्रभु सेवकोरक वच्ची मादगार कोयमबत्तु लो निनार.
Ah, they came from North India.
उत्तर इंदु देसियु नुच वच्चार.
So I was talking to both of them how they were born again.
वार एलागु तिरी जन्मींचनारो आ विषयमय तेलुस्कुंटु वार तो.
So brother gave his testimony.
सहोदर्डु साक्षिन जप्पेरु.
And sister gave her testimony.
सहोदरी कुड़ा तन साक्षिन जप्पी.
And she broke down, started crying, started crying.
एतो एडस्तु हृदय वद्दल इन्नट्टिगा विलपिंचिन.
And I also cried.
नेनु गुड़ा कदिसी एडचा.
We all cried hearing her story.
आमे ओका उर्तांत विंटुन्टे मान अंदरकी दुक्कम आगले.
When she was studying twelfth standard.
पन्नेरु तरति सादुतुन्डगा.
She heard the gospel.
स्वार्थ विन्नदि.
She accepted the Lord.
प्रभु ये ये सुकृष्ट वार अंगीकरिंचिंदी.
Obeyed in waters of baptism.
नीति बाप्तिस्म लो साक्षिविंचिन.
And his parents said, don't enter our house.
तलिदर्लु इंटिलो अडुगु बेट्टो दनाडु.
Go anywhere.
एकड़ गेने वेलु.
Ah, get out from here.
एकड़ चु वेलिपो.
So she had no place to live.
प्रथकड़ा निके एस्थलान लेदु.
So some people suggested.
कोतमंदी सलाह इच्छार.
You go to a Bible school so that, you know, you will get food and also you can study Bible.
बाइबिल पाठशालक एकड़ीकेने वेलते नी चादुकोचु अंते गालकनी सम आहार दुर्खुतुन्दी.
And also a place to live.
ब्रथ निवसिंचन दानी कोका स्थल वायन उन्त दिये.
So she went to a Bible school.
आमे ओका बाइबिल पाठशालक एलिन.
And then the Corona menace came and all schools, colleges and everything was closed.
अप्पु करोना वच्चिंदी पाठशालालु, कलाशालालु अन्नी कुड़ा मुसीसर.
So the Bible school authority said, go, go, at the earliest, leave this place.
बाइबिल स्कूल वालु कुड़ा मुसीवल्स वच्चिंद कावट्टी स्थल में चेकड़ीकेने वेलिपो.
Now all the people had a place to go, all the students.
विद्यार्थ अंदर कुड़ा एकड़ीके वेलालो स्थल मी तावला स्थलान लेदु.
They have their parents, they have their home, they can go back.
वालकु वाला तलिदर्लु उन्नारु, गुरहालु उन्नाई कावट्टी वाल वेलगलारु.
This girl does not have any place to go.
ई बालिककु वेलदानी के एस्थलम लेदु.
She was helpless, but she has to go.
आमे निशाह एस्थितलो उन्दी इत्ते अकानीची वेलाल्सिंदे.
Then one boy who was studying with her.
इत्ते ओका बाल डु तनतो कुड़ा चादुतुन्ना वाडु.
He said, will you come with me?
नातो कुड़ा वस्ताव अन्याडियाडु.
I will accept you, I will marry you.
नेनु निन अंगीकरिस्ता निन विवाहन कुड़ा जेस्कुंटान.
They could not get married because there is no time, because Corona, no.
करोना नु बट्टी वारु विवाहन जेस्कुनान अन कावकाश लेकुन्दी.
So they left, both of them, went back to his house.
वार इत्तर कालिसे आता नी इंटीके लेरु.
And eventually they were married.
वारु विवाहन जेस्कुन्नारु.
Now what I am trying to say.
नेनु एन चप्पो.
The heavy cost she has paid for accepting Jesus Christ.
प्रभु ये ये सुकृष्ट वार ने अंगीकरिंचन कारणंगा गोप्पा क्रायम आमे चेलिंचिंदी.
She had no place to go.
वेलदानी कोका स्थलम अंतु लेदु.
Think of it.
अलचिंसंडी.
Ah, we preach the gospel.
मन स्वार्थ प्रकटिस्ता.
And some people accept.
कोतमंदा अंगीकरिस्तुनाडु.
Ah, but today they are married and they are serving the law.
इत्ते इदिनम वार इत्तर विवाहन जेस्कुन देवुनी सेवल उन्नारु.
We are going to send them to a place to take care of a small flock, do evangelism and develop the work.
वार इत्तर नी ओका स्थलानी के पाम्पिंचनाइ नाम वार अकड़न चिन्ना मंदन कास्तु.
But many of you who are born in Christian believers' family, you are not paying any cost for believing in Lord Jesus.
मेरु छालमंदी विश्वास गुरहानी की चिन्ना कृष्ट कुटुमलो जन्मींचनारु ये क्रायम कुड़ा चेलिंसन अवसर लेकुन्डावुंदी.
I want to tell you there are many people who have paid heavy costs.
अनेक मंदी गोप्पा क्रायम जेलिंची प्रभु मारगलो वेलतुन्ना वार उन्नारु.
For following Lord Jesus Christ.
प्रभु ये ये सुकृष्ट वार ने व्यम्मिंचुन कोरके ने क्रायम जेलिंचन वार.
We know about our dear brother Baxing.
सहोदर्डु बक्सिंग आणि गुरिंची मनम एरुगु.
He came from Canada.
कैनाडा नीच वच्चाडु.
He landed in, in a ship and came to Bombay.
ओड़लो बम्बाई वारको वच्चाडु.
Ah, his father came to receive him.
तन तनरी तन ने रिस्यूज कोडानको वच्चाडु.
Father knew that his son is a Christian and a Christian worker.
तन कुमारु कृष्ट वानिगा मार्याडु अनि तंद तेलुस्कुन्नाडु.
But and he was also a believer in the sense he had been telling him about Christ.
अंते गादु तानु ये सुकृष्ट प्रभु वार नी गुरिंची चप्पुतुन्नट्टन तंद चूछाड़.
But the father said.
तंद अन्नाडु.
I know my son, Bagat, you are sincerely following Jesus Christ.
नी वृक्ष ति ये सुप्रभु वार नी एरार्थंगा सेविस्तुन्ना अनि नाक अर्थमेंटी.
I have no objection, you follow Christ.
दान विषय लो नाके अब्यांतरण लेदु नी वायन व्यम्मिंच.
But I have got one request.
इत्ते नाक ओका मनवी उन्दी.
You, when you come home.
नी इंटीके वच्चन अपुडु.
Don't preach the gospel.
नु इत्तरलकु ये सुप्रभु नु गुरिंची चप्पोदु.
Ah, because your mother will get a heart attack.
लेकु नु अलाव चेस्ते मी अम्मागार की उन्नेनु पोस्तदि.
Ah, and what will be my, my name, our family's name, if you become a Christian, you are a Shetriya.
ना पेयरु कुटुम्प पेयरु प्रतिष्ठा फाड़ आयपोतुन्दी मान खेत्री कुटुम्बानी समझिंचन वार.
Ah, so don't preach the gospel.
स्वार्थ मात्रम प्रकटिंचोदु.
Then Baxing said.
Baxing आरण्नारु.
Can I live without breathing?
नेनु ऊपरी लेकुन्डा ब्रथक गलना.
Can any man live without breathing?
ऊपरी विलच्छकोकुन एवरेना ब्रथक गलरा?
No, he will die.
लेदु चच्चपताम.
He said, being a testimony to Jesus, preaching Jesus Christ is my breath, that is sin, that is my life.
प्रभु ये ये सुकृष्ट वार निकुरिंची चप्पटमु प्रकटिंच्स्तामु इदेना स्वासा ना ऊपरी इन्नजप्पेरु.
Then he said, then you cannot come with me.
इत्ते नी नातो कुड़ा रावटानी की वील लेदु अन्नाडु.
He said, alright, I'll give you all the money, you take it.
नेनु डब्बन्त इच्छस्तान तिस्कु.
Take all my things.
ना कालिगिन आस्तैंत नी पेयर तेस्ता.
I am not coming.
नेनु रानु अन्नाडु.
And he was in the streets of Bombay and he started ministry on the road.
बम्बाई वीधल्लो रोडला पाइने देवुनी पनि प्रारमिंच.
You know his life, he lived here in the city.
ई पट्टनलो कुड़ा ये जीविंचनाडु.
Has established thousands of churches.
वेल संगाल स्तापिंच बाडाई.
A man of prayer.
प्रार्थना परडु.
A man of God's word.
देवुड़ वाक्य तो.
A mighty man of God.
ओका गोप्पा दायवजेरु.
He lived, he paid a heavy cost for following Jesus.
कृष्ट प्रभु नु व्यम्मिंचुटकु गोप्पा क्रायाने चेलिंचनाडु.
Great is his reward.
गोप्पा भहुमानम सिद्ध परस्व बढ़ीन.
Now what is our hope?
मानकुन्ना निरीक्षण एंटी.
That is Lord Jesus Christ.
प्रभु ये ये सुकृष्ट.
And the glory which he has promised to us.
मानकु वाग्धानं चेस्ना महिमा.
The glory of this world will pass away.
ई लोकपु महिमा गतिंच्चबोतुन्दी.
But God is giving us a glory which will never fade away.
अदि क्षयमु कान अट्वेंटी महिमा देवुड़ मानक इस्तुन्नाडु.
And God wants to give this to us.
देवुड़ आ महिमनु मानक इवालनी कोरुतुनाडु.
Have you, have you received that glory?
आ महिमनु पोंदियावा.
Have you received that salvation?
आ रक्षण अनु नी अनुभविंचावा.
Christ knew the hope of glory.
मी अंदुन्ना कृष्टु महिमा इश्वरियमु.
Christ giving and coming and living in a person is a mystery.
कृष्ट ये सुप्रभु ओका व्यक्ति लो निको वच्ची निवसिंचतं बर्बमो.
Ah, it's a, it's a, it's a mystery that God could live in a person.
देवुड़ ओका व्यक्ति लो निवसिंचुता अने.
A person, a man like me, a sister like you, God coming and dwelling in you.
नाम एंटी व्यक्तियका हृदय लो निवसिंचतं, मी सहोदरी नी हृदय लो कोच्ची निवसिंचतं, इदि मर्बम.
Ah, that is the hope of our glory.
अदि मान महिमा निरीक्षण.
Shall we pray?
प्रार्थिंसुकु दाम.
Shall we be on our knees?
मान वोकाल्ल पायुद्दाम.
Wherever we are, let us be quiet for a short while.
नंगा उन्दाम.
Shall we ask the Lord, shall we search our heart?
मान हृदयालु परीक्षिंसुकु दाम.
Have you given your life to the Lord?
नी हृदयानी, जीवितनी प्रभु कर्पिंचनावा.
His truth and nothing but the truth.
आयन आ सत्यमेन वाडु सत्य कार्तिके लेदु आयन ए मार्गम.
Ah, he is truth.
आयन अ सच्यम.
He is life.
आयन जीवम.
He will give that life to you.
आ जीवम निकी इस्ताडु.
Receive him if you have not received him.
इन्तवरका आयनु स्वीकरिंचक पोते, अंगीकरिंचक पोते नेडे अंगीकरिंचु.
Ah, when you get back to home.
इंटीके वेलिन तरवाता.
Get down to your knees.
नी मोकाल्ल पाइकरा.
Ask the Lord, come into me.
प्रभु आ ना हृदय लो निकरा ने अडुगु.
Then the Lord will say, you are full of sin, how can I come?
नी हृदयमता पापंतो उन्दी नेने लागरागलनु अंतडु.
Accept it.
दान अंगीकरिंचु.
Acknowledge it.
दान ओपुको.
Confess it.
ओपुको.
Ah, tell him, yes, Lord, I am a sinner.
आउनु प्रभु आ नेनु पापिने.
Ask the Lord to come into your life.
प्रभु आ ना हृदय लो निको वच्ची कडुगु.
And cleanse you, purify you.
आयन नी लो निकी वच्ची कड़ीके सुदि चेस्ताडु.
And the Lord will do a great and mighty things.
गोप्पा कार्यालु देवुड़ चेस्ताडु.
Shall we pray?
प्रार्थिंसुकु.
Heavenly Father, Eternal God, we thank you and praise you and worship you.
परलोकपु तन नी तिड़गुदावा मेमे मुनु स्तुतिंची गनपरची आराधिस्तुन्ना.
We give you all glory.
समस्त महिमा मीके आरोपिस्तुन्ना.
We thank and praise thy name.
नी नाममुनु मेम्गोप्पा चेस्तुन्नाम.
We thank you, Christ knew the hope of glory.
प्रभु मी अंदुन्ना कृष्टु महिमा निरीक्षण यय्युन्ना माटन बटिस्तुतिस्तु.
It is a mystery that we cannot fully understand how eternal God could come and dwell in people like us.
नित्यड़ इन्नट्वेंटी देवुड़ मालो निको वच्ची एलागु निवसिंचकलडु मेम अर्थं चेस्कोले नी मर्ममिदि.
But he has come into our lives.
इत्ते आयन आ हृदयालो निको वच्चाडु.
If there is anybody who has not accepted Lord.
प्रभु आ इनकाय एवरेने इकड़ी चेन्न वारु मेमलांगीकरिंचकुन्डा उन्ते.
We pray that today may be the day of salvation in his life, our life.
वार ये का जीवितन लो ई दिनमु रक्षण दिनमुगा चेयबडुनु गाकारी प्रार्थिस.
Lord, pray that thou may open our eyes of understanding to understand these mysteries written in the word of God.
देवुनी वाक्य लो राय बट्ना ई मर्ममलनु मेमो अर्थं चेस्कोडानी कोका सहाय्म.
When we are considering other mysteries in the word of God, pray that thou will speak to us.
देवुनी वाक्य लो ने मिगिल्न मर्मालु गुरिंची मेमन ध्यान इंचेसी संदर्भमलो.
Lord, even, even as we start our morning Bible study tomorrow, be with us.
उदय कालपु ध्यान समयाने मेमे प्रारमिचन अपुडु कुड़ा मातो उन्डंडी.
Prepare me to deliver thy word.
नी वाक्य नाने चुटकु नंदु सिद्ध परचु.
Lord, prepare us to receive thy word.
नी वाक्य ने स्वीकरिंचुटकु हृदयालु ने सिद्ध परचु.
We thank you for El Shaddai.
El Shaddai कोरकु मेमुनु स्तुतिस्तुन्नाम.
Thank you for the twenty-five years of existence.
तेरिरवे इदु समस्याला बद्रता साक्षिन कोरकनाडु.
Pray that this church may go into greater glory manifesting the person of Jesus Christ.
प्रभु आ ये का सांगमु आतकातकु महिमा परच्च बाडु प्रभु ये ये सुकृष्ट वार नी प्रत्यक्ष परचे सांगंगाचे.
Tomorrow is not a holiday.
रेपु सेलव दिनं कादु.
But pray that people may take some leave or whatever and do some sacrifice and come and attend these meetings.
प्रभुलु, वरिष्ठलु सेलव देस्कुन एना ये विदंगान एना कुड़ीकका हाजर गुटकु वारीक मनसिवंदी सहाय्मचे.
We pray in Jesus Christ's precious name.
ये सुकृष्ट प्रभु प्रशस्तमेन नामलो प्रार्थिस्तुन्नाम तंद्री.
Announcements. So tomorrow morning we will be gathering here at ten o'clock.
रेपु देय कालम पदिघट्लकु मान तिरी समावेश मौताम.
So if you come in time, we'll learn some more songs.
समयानी कोच्चन अट्लाइत्ते मरिकुनी पाटल नेच्कुटाम.
Old songs, but for us now it is new.
पात्ता पाटले इत्ते मानकु कोरुत्ता.
They are related to their theme and also it's very, very encouraging.
अवि अम्शानिकी सम्मानिंचन अट्वेंटी अर्थमंतमेन पाटलु मानकु प्रोत्साहकरणगा उन्ताई.
So try to be here by ten o'clock.
समयानी की तावटानी प्रयत्न.
And evening again, afternoon there is sisters meeting at soon after the lunch after tomorrow.
रेप मध्यानम बोजनम मुग्ये गाने सहोदरीला प्रत्येक कुड़ीका कालिगुंटाम.
So those who come in the morning, you have lunch here in the afternoon.
एवरेते उदय कालम स्तर वारी परकाई मध्यान बोजन पेर पार्ट चेयबडु.
Soon after that, we have sisters meeting.
आ बोजन कागने सहोदरीला प्रत्येक कुड़ीका.
Again evening at, we have announced it at seven o'clock, but I think it's better we come little fifteen minutes early so that we can learn some songs.
सायंकालम एड़गण्टलकनी प्रकटिंच्या गानी कोच्च मुंदु रागलगिते कोनी पाटल नेच्कुडानी कावकाश उन्ताई.
So we'll start little early tomorrow.
मान व अदि कोच्च आ, तरगा प्रारंभिस्ता.
Tomorrow and day after we'll start at six forty-five.
आ मनम रेपु एलुडी कुड़ा आरुघट्लके प्रारंभिस्ता.
आरुन नलपे एथु.
आरुन नरक प्रारंभिस्ता.
आरुन नलपे एथु.
आरुन नलवय एथु.
So if you can come little early, we'll spend some time in prayer and also in songs.
आ कोच्च तदेंगा वच्चन अट्लाइत्ते पाटल नेच्कुने ये उन्तंडी.
But one more thing we forgot to announce this morning is.
एमे मु वरका विषय नी प्रयत्नचकोरुतुन्नाये.
On Wednesday, same we have morning ten o'clock, we have the Bible study.
उदय कालम मामुल्गने पदिघट्लकु बाइबिल अध्ययन उन्तति.
And we have lunch for everyone.
अंदरकी बोजनम उन्तदि.
But we don't have sisters meeting on that day.
आ दिनाना सहोदरीला कुड़ीका उन्नाडु.
But we want you to come here by six thirty on Wednesday.
बुदवारम सायंकालम आरुन नरगण्टलके रावलनी कोरु.
It's a holiday.
अदि सेलव दिनम.
So we want you to come here at six thirty exclusively, from six thirty to seven, we are going to have a worship time.
आरुन नरुची एड़गण्टल वरकु मध्याकाल लो मन देवुड़ ई समस्यालु जेसन कार्यालु बट्टी देवुनी स्तुतिंची आराधिचे समय अनिकलिगु.
It's an opportunity for all who come so they can take part in worship.
देवुनी आराधिचुट्लो वच्ची अंदर कुड़ा फाल पोंदवच.
Because after the meeting, we cannot have sufficient time.
अदुकरगा कुड़ीका अनंतरमु मनमु अलागु देवुनी आराधिचन दानी की समयम सरिपोको.
So we are going to start at six thirty on Wednesday.
कावट्टी बुदवारम मात्रम सायंकालम आरुन नरगण्टलके कुड़ीका प्रारंभिस्ता.
Then there will be a brief testimony of how the Lord has been leading us during the years.
तरवाता गत समस्यालन निट्लो देवुड़ एलागु नडिपिंचनाडु दानी गुरिंचन अट्वेंटी साक्ष्य समय अनिकलिगु.
Also Thanksgiving message on that day after the testimony.
आ साक्ष्यमु तरवाता देवु कुमार मंदरकुड़ा उर्तक नेता वर्थमान अन्नी मनमिंता.
And then we have a love feast for everyone after.
तरवाता अंदर कोरकाई मान प्रेमाविंद कालिगुंटाम.
So lunch as well as evening Thanksgiving love feast on that day.
मध्यान बोजनम मात्रमेका कुन्ना सायंकालम प्रत्येकमेन प्रेमाविंद उन्तंडी.
As I, as we mentioned, many people from outside, we are expecting.
आ, आ कुड़ीककु छालमंदी वेलपट्टी संगाल निच्छु कुड़ा रावच.
We try to take time to invite them and also at the same time help them, host them and also at the same time take care of them.
आ कावट्टी वारकी तेलय परच्चंडी, वार ने रागलगुटकु तेलिस्न वार नी वीर आह्वानिंचन वार ने बलमंतं चेंदी, आ रेतिगा अदर रागलगुन्नट्टु चुडंडी.
And also invite others also for these meetings, kindly invite others also.
अदे इत्तरलनु कुड़ा आह्वानिंचंडी.
So the Lord may able to, Lord's name may be glorified.
देवुनी नाममु महिम परस्व बडुनाट्टु.
Shall we pray?
प्रार्थिंसुकु.
Now may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God the Father, the fellowship and communion of the Holy Spirit be with us both now and forevermore.
Amen.
Praise God bless you.